All right, the Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen is called to order. I am First Selectman Christine Vitale. I'm joined by Select Women Brenda Kupchak and Marcy Spolier. Ask you to all please rise for the pledge, and Ms. Kupchak will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first item, I don't see. Our town libra-- is Scott, Mr. Zarmback, on the line?
Here he is. You're right, you're right on the podium.
Really? I never want that.
Welcome, our town librarian. All right, we have, um, three A. To here consider an act on an agreement between the Fairfield Public Library and Culinary Helping Hands for a library chef database. This approval includes the authorization to enter into renewal on similar terms and conditions. Can I motion? Ms. Kupchak?
Second by Ms. Spolier.
I mean, it's, it is, it is what it says it is. It's a database, relatively inexpensive database that patrons will be able to use and access for cooking lessons and recipes.
How cool is that?
That's, you know, I mean, it's, it falls in line with what, you know, the library buying cooking books. But this way now you have this resource that's available 24/7.
And you go on the, on the, on the library site?
On the website. I'm pretty sure, yes.
Are you decreasing your amount of cookbooks that you're buying?
No, because those are always.
Going off the shelves, because I know, okay.
Yeah, you know, again, to be short, they've heard my song and dance of eBooks and databases are becoming more and more popular while regular books are still staying steady as popular. So this is more meeting the demand of that particular way we deliver information, that format. We consider eBooks just another format, but they're very popular because it's 24/7. You know, you can borrow an eBook, you know, if the weather has closed the library, as long as you have power, you can still borrow an eBook.
Regretting not going, logging on to check it out.
Well, we haven't started it yet, but when we do, I will check.
This is not, this is a totally new one. Sometimes we have.
This is a new one. This isn't a renewal. This, I believe, is a new one.
When does it start?
As soon as I tell Jan that I got the approval. So probably in a month. Give us a month. Sorry, it's, it's government, it's a long process.
We like to cook, so.
Yes, we do.
And winter's coming, cooking season. All right. Any further questions? Any comment from the public? Chief?
Yeah, I like to cook, too.
All right, back to the board for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. All right, three B. To here consider and act on an agreement between the Fairfield Public Library and soundtrack for children's programming, such as storytime, et cetera. This approval includes the authorization to enter into renewals on similar terms and conditions. Can I motion?
Come on.
So if you're questioning the use of this, I invite you to go to the green any Friday morning at 10:00 a.m. Our outside storytime, which is like a song and dance performance with some stories, had, will, on a bad day, bring about 250 to 300 people, and on a good day, bring about 450 to 500 people. So this is really just, we incorporate music into almost all of our early literacy work. This will just give us the ability to, I think right now we're using someone's Spotify account, which we probably shouldn't do, so this would give us the ability to do that and do that a little bit more under the user agreement.
Thank you. Yeah, I noticed, because I drive around town for work and I often park in that parking lot to do paperwork, and I'm like, oh, it must be one of those days. It's very well attended.
Sing and stop is.
And it sounds fun when you have your car windows open.
Well, it's good.
Any questions? Any members of the public? Back to the board for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number four, we have Chief Mike Harris and Deputy Chief Eiwaya presenting, actually, Chief here. To here consider an act on approving an agreement between the Town of Fairfield Police Department and Axon, and further authorizing the First Selectmen to execute any and all documents contained within said agreement.
Second.
Just for the board, we want to give you a little update on this. You may recall, we approved a bonding request to fund this whole project. When the project was before the Board of Finance, there was discussion about whether or not it should be bonded, considering its technology, and questioned whether or not it would outlast the life of the bond. So after some discussion, while there was strong support for the project, the agreement was that this should be something that should be funded annually through the operating budget. There is funding for this for year one through ARPA, but being that it is a contract, it's coming back to us for approval even since five year, if it's dependent on subsequent operating budgets and getting funding approved. Axon did report to the Board of Finance that if the funding wasn't available in a particular year, the contract could be amended or.
Terminated.
Terminated. And the chief is before us just to present the contract.
I actually watched the meeting, and honestly, I was pretty disappointed about how that went. I felt like they could have bonded it for five years, but regardless. I would say, though, on a side note, I think in the future, maybe pass along to the Board of Finance that, you know, having either the police or fire chief sitting in a meeting for like three, four hours is probably not really appropriate. I mean, they're in charge of public safety. Things are happening all throughout the, you know, town, and I just think that that's probably not great. But I'm happy if we do this. Would it, would we be the cost in the first year?
Sure. So this is a refresh of the contract, and year one, because it's already, already allocated and because it's a refresh, is already designated to use ARPA funding, which was that eight forty-five, zero-two-zero-point-eight-four. That's year one, so it's a cost neutral on year one for us. It's years two through five where we see the four equal annual payments of six thirty-four, seven thirty-five, eighty-nine. That was my only concern about making sure that we presented it before your board and the Board of Finance to ensure that this was a long-term contract, and our hope was to bond it so that we had assurance that we were able to last through that contract. But the Board of Finance, again, like the Selectmen spoke about, thought that it should come back before you and continue through our operating budget from years two through five. So the total amount of the, of the contract is three million, three point, three million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Right. I mean, some of the comments, I think, maybe people don't understand that these are required by law. You have to have them. Cannot operate without a dash cam, cannot operate without a body cam. You have to have tasers. This is all state law.
Yeah, this is, this is equipment that brings our department, one, up to speed with the law, but two, it also brings us up to the technology that is required more lately under our, under our purview. And we're seeing other departments go there. We, we are not a department to sit in the background and wait and see. So this is why this is before you, and this is why we've kind of done this now, so that we have the evidence before you to show the need and the use, and the public safety aspect of this is definitely a concern for us. So having this equipment only enhances that opportunity for our officers to do our job better and ensure that the community is maintained and well safe.
And my understanding, just refreshment, if I'm not wrong, is that with this contract, if there's new technology, it would be moved forward to us immediately, which I think was also one of the concerns about bonding it, and that some of the technology, you know, two years, two years from now, it could be upgraded. So there was some question about that, and just carrying the debt, debt service on the bond also comes with an added cost outside of the cost of the contract.
Mind you also, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mind you also, this allows us to consolidate a lot of contracts into one. So, which is important to us because it allows us to be more efficient. As we see one contract expire with a group of things on it, it's much easier to be able to manage one contract rather than several.
Where was that, where was that in the contract before? Was that on the operating budget, or was that bonded before?
It was ARPA funding.
But like, before ARPA, like, you had tasers. So where, where was that?
That was out of the operating budget.
That wasn't operating.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You used the ARPA money.
Yeah, I remember that.
Chief Callum Morris had come, you were.
Yeah, no, I remember that. I just, I'm saying before. I mean, you've had tasers before.
Way before to upgrade the whole system to this more.
Right, nope.
More efficient. And what I think was really interesting during that presentation, I don't know if you remember, is that they aggregate the tapes, and they actually block out people from the background, so that people's identities aren't, you know, disclosed, who aren't part of the, whatever's happening. And they hold it, which is by law, another thing that you have to hold it for a specific amount of time. So they do a lot of things that are pretty interesting, and the fact that they're able to, you know, meld other contracts that are going, you know, away into this one saves, is cost savings, right?
It is, it doesn't, definitely cost savings. Again, it's more efficient for us, for sure. And on top of all of this, it allows our offices to be more efficient. The Axon Translate portion of this is so important.
Very cool.
Yeah, as you saw the live, I wish I gave you a live demo here, but if you saw on the thing, it's, it's really, really good.
Now, were the drones involved in this?
Yes, ma'am. So, yeah, this would have considered three drones, which is, and three docs, which we would host at a, hopefully, I don't know the exact locations yet, but they'll be public facilities. So let's say police or fire departments or Board of Ed or whatever the case may be. We will do a study as to where the most efficient spot to host them. Again, we're seeing neighboring communities use them with great success, Milford being one of them. And, you know, back in the day, you'd think helicopters around you as you're responding to calls. This is, this is the 2020, 2025 version of a helicopter. More safe, more efficient, something that is very moving forward pretty quickly. And as a police department, we notice that we have to keep up with that technology, because when, the minute we fall behind, we're trying to catch up year after year.
Don't question the need for this. It just went where it is in the budget. That's why I'm questioning.
Yes, ma'am.
So you won't have to put this in the budget this year?
That's correct.
But next year, it will have to be.
Next, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, the police did come and just, how do you think we should fund it? And we went kind of back and forth on that. We added it to the waterfall, really at the eleventh hour, and I thank Sabrina for, she, for, you know, she was done, and then we asked her to put it back in and wanted to bring it, you know, the town bodies, part of the Capital Waterfall Summit, but they don't think there was a real understanding of just some of the terms and conditions of the contract. So when it went to Board of Finance, it, it came back, and they even suggested bringing it to the RTM, so we'll have to bring, whether or not the RTM just wants an update on this. That can, not that you're on the RTM anymore, but.
I think it's actually, it's on the agenda, but I think it was originally if.
The finance approved it.
Something. I'm not sure. I think I saw something on it.
But I think it's, it is good just to put it on everyone's radar. If this, if this gets, if this five-year contract gets approved today, that it is going to be something that we're going to be seeing in upcoming budgets. So. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to number five. We have Adam, Adam Toulon and our DPW Director Frank Patisse. To here consider and act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into an agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Luke's DeCarlo and Dahl Inc. of Merritton, Connecticut, to provide design services and else necessary for the re-roofing of the historic Burr Homestead per Town of Fairfield, RFQ number two zero two-three-dash-zero-two, for on-call architectural engineering design services, and as detailed in the Luke's DeCarlo and Dahl proposal dated September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, for initial contract value not to exceed forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, with additional authority to enter into necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed the approved funding for the project. Can I motion?
Come on.
Ms. Kupchak second. Mr. Toulon, do you want to start us off?
Yes, hi, this is Adam Toulon, Director of Purchasing. As the resolution says, we've engaged with Luke's DeCarlo and Dahl through our on-call engineering and architectural design services, RFQ. As a contract under fifty thousand dollars, it would be exempt as a professional services agreement anyway, but this is a, a project that, I think because of the historic nature of the structure, James Ryan was looking for some additional support in developing proper construction documents for the re-roofing project. This contract includes work for phases one and two, or tasks one and two, which includes the initial sort of site inspection and evaluation, and then the development of the construction documents. Any additional services beyond that, including bidding assistance or construction administration, which would be considered tasks three and four, are not included in this scope. And, you know, if we get to that point, we could either go back out to RFP if, you know, or proceed as a change order, I guess, sort of be at the discretion of the purchasing authority, how we have this resolution worded.
Thank you. Mr. Patisse, anything you want to add to at this point? Back to the board for any questions?
This is just for, well, for forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars.
And that's for architectural engineering design services? That's not even.
For inspection, evaluation, design services.
I mean, seems really high.
Talk about just the, this project, a little bit?
I mean, I get it's very expensive, but that's not even the roof.
So again, I, I can't speak to.
We have, we have, we have Mr. Patisse here.
I do believe it's because of the nature of the, you know, the historic nature of the building, but yeah, hopefully he can answer more specifically.
Correct. So Frank Patisse, Director of Public Works, yes, it's my understanding it's due to the historic nature of the structure. It's not, you know, your standard run-of-the-mill just roof replacement. So we hired them, trying to hire them to do the architectural and engineering analysis of it, to see the best fit there to replace the roof.
They got to meet with the historical group before or during?
I would assume so, yes. I can definitely make sure they are.
I would make sure.
Yes.
And likely the state historical as well.
The state is nothing.
I, I don't have it in front of me. I assume that's part of the proposal, but I'll make sure that they do that.
Make this a very, much more expensive roof than it needs to be.
Well, I mean, also design and materials as well.
Crazy. So the whole, what do you think it's going to estimate out, like, at the end of the day?
I don't have an answer for you there on that.
Could be big.
How old's the roof now?
Adam, do you know the answer to that?
I do, I do not have the proposal in front of me at the moment either. I want to say, though, that there's an estimate somewhere in the proposal, in the range of two hundred thousand dollars. Does that, does anyone have the back open? I believe it's in the proposal.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, that was, yeah, that was the, the estimate. Yeah.
What, what is it made of now? What is the roof?
Sorry, I don't know the answer to that either.
I would think they would just replace the roots there. But that's just me. Because I know the church, you know, you know, the whole thing, the church across the street, that whole boondoggle. Cost a fortune. Anyway.
It is, but we need to make sure that we do it correctly.
Design and engineering and architecture is a lot, I know. And that's not even historic. So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any further questions? Any member of the public that did comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to number six. Purchasing Authority. To here consider and act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into an amended agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Robert Biggennett, J. Biggennett of Fairfield, Connecticut, to provide management golf professional services and else necessary at the H. Smith Richardson and South, South Pine Creek Golf Courses per Town of Fairfield Bid number two zero two-one-dash-zero-one, and as detailed in this amended agreement for initial contract value of one hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents, with additional authority to enter into up to four optional one-year extensions for a total amended contract term not to exceed five years. Can I have a motion? Ms. Spolier, second by Ms. Kupchak. And we have Mr. Toulon and Chief of Community Services, Anthony Calabrese, presenting this.
Hi, yes, this is Adam Toulon again, Director of Purchasing. I'll just, I'll start this off by saying, I, I looked at this sort of from, or this came at me from sort of two different angles. One was that our initial term from the 2021 RFP was coming to an end, and it's my understanding that the Golf Commission and Mr. Calabrese have all been extremely satisfied with the work of Mr. Biggennett and the, the programs and everything that have been going on, responsible for. So there was a desire to extend if possible. Separately, I was contacted by the Town Attorney requesting that our, that the agreement get a rewrite, basically, to sort of reclassify the position. So with those two things in mind, we opted to bring forward this amended contract for a new five-year term, at which point we will then go back out to bid.
So to be clear, go out back to bid, one year extended and then go back out to bid? Anthony?
No, this, this would be an additional five years, but there are one-year contracts, one-year extensions that are with this. So it's a year, it's basically a year-to-year, but it's a five-year maximum contract.
Is, is the reason that he's not like a town employee position because it's seasonal, or is there, why do we contract for this versus making somebody a town employee?
I, I think, I don't know if Adam wants us to speak to that, but I believe that this is just industry best practice, and this is what the majority of the towns in the state of Connecticut, at least in the Northeast, this is how they handle it, is an independent contractor.
Mr. Toulon, I get it.
So I could just say, the fee that you see, the, the one ninety-two or, and change, that's not solely Bob's fee. He has to pay for his own staff out of that as well, and the, and the business that he runs up there. So, you know, it mentions that all throughout the document, but again, just, I'm, I'm just, you know, not, I'm not, just don't want everybody to assume that that's the fee he gets.
Right, yes.
Yeah, this went out to bid under, when I first came in, they were just, had someone there who, they never went out to bid. And the Town Attorney looked at it and said it has to go out. So we did, and Bob bid on it, and he won. And I think he's done a phenomenal job. I mean, he really runs a great program. People love it. He actually taught my husband how to golf. We, we bought him a package for his birthday last year. He never golfed before, and he loves golf now, to my dismay, but, yeah. So, and anyway, he's very good in teaching somebody who didn't like golf to love golf, so.
Well, right there is an endorsement. I, all right, and I agree. Very good guy. Heard nothing but great things about him. And to Mr. Calabrese, just, I mean, our golf courses are doing so well and serving the needs of our residents. And thank you, Golf Commission and Mr. Biggennett, for, for all you're, you're doing to meet the needs and bringing more people.
And generating revenue.
Generating.
Which you really like.
Generating, generating revenue, which we absolutely like, and also providing a wonderful recreation opportunity for all ages. So. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. And thank.
Thank you all.
Number seven. To here consider and act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into an agreement between the Town of Fairfield and the Wanderlust Group, Inc., doing businesses between the town of Fairfield and the Wanderlust Group, Inc., doing business as DAKWA of Freeport, Maine, to provide an annual subscription for the DAKWA Marina Management Software as detailed in DAKWA proposal dated October second, two thousand twenty-five, for an initial year fee of eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, with additional authority to enter into renewals on similar terms and conditions. Motion? This is followed by Ms. Kupchak. Okay, uh, Mr. Tulun?
Hi, yes. So this is a software subscription. We're presenting it to you uh because of the dollar amount and the, the length of the term. Um, I'll just mention at this price point, uh, the uh, Mr. Kathkar and Mr. Calabrese did uh seek out multiple quotes. They got proposals from three different companies. And uh, DAKWA had not only the best price, but they felt the most comfortable with the uh, the product that was being offered. It's, it's Marina Management. I, I mean, I don't know if you have specific questions about the, the suites within the software. Hopefully they, they are there to answer that better than I can.
Justin, or Anthony or Justin, you want to give us a brief just overview of this?
Yeah, very, very simple. Uh, for us, uh, we needed to come up with a uh, a solution, a management solution to uh help facilitate the boat slips and kayak racks that we have down at the marina um and at Jennings Beach. Um, the current software that we were using was a, a program that was written in-house by a um, one of our technicians in our IT department about twenty-five, maybe even thirty years ago. And our current IT department said, hey, this is, this is going to end at the end of this year. You need a new, new software system, which is what really um kind of forced our hand to move to something a little more modern and uh, which will help us ultimately in, in the long run here, uh, managing the marina and getting slips and doing online payments and things of that nature that we don't currently have the capability of doing. Yeah, that's pretty much the rundown on where we are with the DAKWA software.
So um, it's eleven thousand five sixty-seven for the first year? And is it that same price every single year?
No, it looks like there's a, a three to four percent increase um year after year. So yeah, I think, I don't recall. I apologize. Um.
Sorry, if I could just interject.
I don't know if it says, yeah, go ahead, Adam, sorry.
You're not wrong about that increase, but I'll just add, it's, the base price is a little bit higher in the first year because it includes a uh, a setup fee. I want to say it's about fifteen hundred dollars um is included in that eleven-five. So year two will go down if I remember correctly, but there will be annual increases to what has to be said.
So Anthony and Justin, do you guys just pull the data off of it? Or did they help you in any way? Or they just, this is just like a licensing fee?
I'm going to let Justin jump in on that one. See if he can uncut himself.
Justin?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so we will, they'll be pulling our data from the old software system and uploading it to their software.
Do they do anything each year? Like, do they help you in any way? Or is this just like, we pay him eleven grand a year and just to have it?
They'll be offering uh technical support, helping us uh especially this first year, getting everyone um brought up to speed to use the software. Uh, the, the slipholders will be able to uh use it. And then if we, if we need assistance as, as we're going through the years, they're, they will be there to help. But once it, it gets up and running, it's, it's a fairly uh, uh, user-friendly software is what they're telling us.
Okay, thank you. Do you envision using all of the, all of these functions in year one?
Um, yes, that's the, that's the hope. Uh, all the functions that we have on the um, on the docket there. Um, both the storage module and the uh CNC module, yes.
Very cool. Somebody who used to work in a marina, do marina billing, I'm like, wow.
It should make life uh easier for both the, the staff as well as the slipholders. That's, that's the goal.
I mean, it definitely looks like it will.
Will they send out the notices like when it, when it's coming up? When, because people, I know they take a lot of grief down there about this.
I'll still be, yeah, I'll still be sending out the notices, but um, it's going to make it a lot easier. Right now, when, when, when I send out the notices, I have to go through two different softwares to figure out who has and hasn't paid. And after a certain point, you just want to get the people that haven't paid. Um, this is going to do all that information, sorting of that information much easier. And then we send out the blast to, to those individuals.
That'll be good.
Yeah, it's great. All right. Any questions? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, purchasing authority to here consider an act on authoring, authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into an agreement between the town of Fairfield and Becker Landscaping of Fairfield, Connecticut, to provide labor materials, equipment, and else necessary for the culvert replacement project at Verna Hill Road as detailed in the Town of Fairfield bid number two zero two six, six dash twelve, and the Becker Landscaping bid submission dated October seventh, two thousand twenty-five for a lump sum in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, inclusive of the based bid and ad alternates one through three, with additional authority to enter into necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed the approved funding for this project. This is followed by Ms. Kupchak.
Usually Adam starts off and I'll be here to answer any other questions.
Yes, thank you. This is Adam Tulun again. So yes, as we put out this bid, uh, it's a relatively smaller culvert uh replacement project on Verna Hill, as the resolution says. Uh, we received five bids. Becker Landscaping was the clear and obvious low bid. You know, if you look at the, the price difference, I, I've jotted down a couple ideas about the price difference. I don't know if Mr. Hurley will have more, but uh just off the top of my head, when you look at the, the comparison, which I believe I provided as backup. First of all, their bid falls below the prevailing wage threshold, which uh is, is helpful when you're, at least when you're talking about pricing. Obviously, we want to support our, uh, our workers. But um, their mobilization cost is significantly lower than everyone else. But uh, you know, you can, can almost understand that with their proximity. Their traffic protection price is lower than the other bidders. But other than that, when you actually look at the uh materials and, and labor pricing, they're, uh, they're pretty much on par with all the other bidders. So uh, we found no reason uh not to view this as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And now we're looking for your approval to proceed with the contract as presented.
Mr. Hurley, want to just tell us a little bit about this project?
Sure. Um, this is the Verna Hill Road uh stone culvert. Uh, it suffered some damage back in uh, when we had Hurricane Ida. We had to obtain permits and we had to work with utilities to finally uh get everything in place. Uh, we put the contract out to bid. There is currently a FEMA deadline by the end of the month to do the work. So I'm hoping that you, the Board of Selectmen approve this. Uh, the contractor most likely would start um next week. Matter of fact, we have a, a follow-up meeting with the utility tomorrow, uh, assuming again approval. Uh, and then the duration of this project, as Adam said, it's a relatively, I won't call it totally simple, but it's a culvert replacement. We dig up an old stone culvert, which has, it's starting to collapse and it suffered some damage. We'll put in a reinforced concrete pipe. They'll have to compact and backfill, and then they, they'll have to work with the utility. And then it gets paved and then we're done. It should only take about ten to, ten days, ten to fourteen days to do the work. And uh, the road will be closed, though. That is another thing that will enable them to move at an expedited uh pace. So uh, Verna Hill will be closed in that one section of uh right near hillside, right, right, right near hillside, right, exactly. And there'll be uh, part of the contract was to set up uh detour signs and, you know, road or bridge out signs uh for that. And as I said, it, it, they, um, they're confident that it could take, uh, you know, roughly ten to fourteen days. They have worked on some of our FEMA projects before with good success. And like Adam said, uh, the, the bid is less than the funding amount, which is always a, a good sign for us as well. So um, I see no reason, um, as I said, we've worked with them before and have had no issues, so.
They worked on another project, right?
Yes, a twin Brooks just recently, yes.
Also, there were subcontractors on another Verna Hill on hillside over there.
Yes, hillside, that's right, that's right, yes. As a matter of fact, the subcontractors, Palmieri Farm and Fernandez Paving, they're part of the uh, the bid package as well. So uh, they have the manpower to do the work and um, as I said, I'm, I'm not anticipating any issues.
Any questions for Mr. Tulun or Mr. Hurley?
Come, um, you think the bid, the bid's so far low, much lower than the others?
Well, Adam had mentioned, because we had analyzed, both he and I analyzed the, the bid. They saved significant amount of money mobilization. There was maybe one other local firm, but all the rest were from Danbury or an hour away. And if you're going back and forth, because there's limited um, uh, room for uh you know, storage of vehicles and all that, so I'm sure they were uh considering that update. Uh, the prevailing wage because they were under the, the threshold.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that, that plays into it. And then the other items overall, they were about maybe ten percent lower than the lowest one. Not, nothing, you know, extraordinary. Uh, and as I said before, they've worked with the town. They know what FEMA requires. They know the permits. And um, uh, they did not do a markup on the, a police traffic control. A lot of companies do that. They, they did it straight out, so. That's where a lot of the savings came from.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense. And they are a great local company, so. And I, I totally get that. And being under the prevailing wage definitely saves.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, any question? Mr. Hurley, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Number nine, to purchasing authority. To here consider an act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into a master agreement between the town of Fairfield and United Control Solution, Inc., of Merritt, Connecticut, to provide labor, materials, equipment, and else necessary for on-call service and repairs, HVAC controls throughout town as detailed in the Town of Fairfield bid number two zero two six dash zero nine, and the United Control Solutions submission dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, for initial base term through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, with up to four additional optional one-year renewals. Motion? Second by Ms. Kupchak. Mr. Tulun, want to walk us through this one?
Yes, thank you. And I believe this is my last one, so you don't have to hear my voice again tonight. But um, this is in line with our, our sort of current focus on developing uh these on-call master service agreement type contracts, uh, so that we have contractors ready to go and, and under contract uh when we have needs that come up. So this one is specifically, this will be most useful to uh James Ryan and the facilities team. As issues come up with our HVAC controllers, it'll be helpful to have this company on call with established pricing and labor rates. So that sort of these small and medium-sized issues can be resolved more efficiently. Uh, United Control was one of three bids we received. And across the board of all the pricing we were looking for, they were the, the clear uh low, low bidder. So that's why we're proposing moving forward to the contract for this with them.
They know to how, they know how to work with all of these different manufacturers, Johnson, Allerton, all that. All these controllers.
If, if memory serves, we, we have worked with this company in the past. Uh, they're familiar with most of our equipment. Um, and it was a required, we did have a, a thorough uh listing of all of our current manufacturers in the bid. They, they made no exceptions.
This is just like a service agreement, so like when something breaks, they'll come?
Exactly.
The service, yeah.
Right, so just have somebody on call, don't have to wait and make sure.
No, I, I understand. No, that's good. And what is, I, I'm sorry, am I missing it? This is, are, are they? What is the cost?
There's an hourly breakout.
Oh, so it's, it's worth, we're, we're getting a service contract with them and then we just pay? We pay anything for the yearly service contract?
No, we, we'll ju, we're just establishing their labor rates, their, their material markups, things like that. And then as Mr. Ryan has uh sort of crisis issues with controllers going down, uh, he can reach out to this company and they can, you know, they'll fix, you know, they'll, they'll give him a, a proposal. As long as it's in line with the contract pricing, he can just proceed.
Gotcha. Oh, okay. It's a one-year contract with an optional, the four one-year optional renewal terms?
Yes, as long as they're performing satisfactorily, uh, I assume he would like to uh keep this as long as we can, but we have the out after every year.
Mr. Patis is here also. Do you have anything to add? Or no, no pressure. If you, the answer, the answer can be no.
Not really, just uh, we all, we are down on, in our uh HVAC tradesman now. So we're also trying to fill that position, so this also helps us uh during that transition as well.
Good luck. Nobody's going into it. It's really hard to find anybody.
Thank you for those valuable information to have as well. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tulun. Thank you, Mr. Patis.
Thank you.
All right, we're, we're moving on. And now Mr. Papa George is going to be the star of, star of the show. We have a Director of Operations for Fairfield Public Schools. This requires RTM approval. Resolve that the town of Fairfield authorizes the board's education of the town of Fairfield to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services to accept or reject a grant for the McKinley Elementary School Security Vestibule Enhancements at McKinley Elementary School. And further resolve that the McKinley Elementary School Security Vestibule Building Committee is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the McKinley Security Vestibule Project at McKinley Elementary School. And further resolve that the Town of Fairfield hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the McKinley Security Vestibule Project at McKinley Elementary School. Can I have a motion? So moved second. Followed by Ms. Kupchak. Mr. Papa George. Just for the board, you, we approved the funding for these projects at the special meeting. We just, this is, in order to get state funding, we need to go through some other steps. And I'm going to let Mr. Papa George explain.
Can I ask before Angela starts, can, I mean, these are all going to be all the schools. Can we combine these? I mean, they're all the same thing.
I think that maybe we will just waive the reading of this.
We would ask that you waive the reading, but still vote for each one, just so for state filing.
That we know that we, that we did it.
Can I ask, are you, are we going to, we're required to um establish a building committee for each one?
This is going to go.
The standing building committee is our intent with this project, so.
That hasn't been created yet?
Well, it's the, the special project, special project standing building committee, yep. So it would be assigned to that group. So yeah, and again, they, because we're required to give the minutes from the meeting, we would ask that you vote for each one of them.
Okay, very good. So this is just formalities?
This is, this is really a formality, just that, um, that we authorize them to apply to, to the state and that approved this project is going to be managed by the special projects building committee.
Who's on that note?
Rich Speciali's.
I know, Rich is, Rich is usually my go-to guy, so other than that, I can't think of the other names, I'm horrible with names, I apologize.
It's just, it's no big deal, I just want.
Anything else to add, Mr. Papa George, why don't you give us, for the minutes, you can give us the presentation on this?
No, as, as you said, this is, it's a standard formality that we have to go through for state reimbursement to apply for the application, uh, you guys already approved the funding, uh, the final funding approval is on next week for the RTM, when, is, if that gets approved, then we'll be able to hit submit for this application for November one, which is our, our hopes to get that in, so that we get the process rolling through the holidays, so right after New Year's, we will get approval on the project and move, continue to move it forwards.
Any public comment on this? Back to the board for a vote?
Number ten.
Number, number ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to waive the reading?
Well, this, let me just do the, let me do these, for these, because they're separate ones, we get to the other school. Number 11, McKinley Elementary School Security Vestibule Building Committee, to here, consider and approve a charge for the McKinley Elementary School Vestibule Building Committee.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, back to, to the public for any public comment, seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 12, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the First Selectmen, resolve that the special project standing building committee shall serve as the McKinley Elementary School Security Vestibule Building Committee, MSVBC, for the purpose of performing security and safety upgrades to the main entrance vestibule at McKinley Elementary School.
So moved.
Second by Ms. Kupchak. Any questions for Mr. Papa George? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. All right, moving on to number 13, this is basically the same as number 10, only we are going to be talking about the Sherman Elementary School, that's.
Motion to waive the readings for 13, 14, and 15.
Do you want to do it that way? Sure. Okay. Second, all in favor of waiving the reading?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so let's go to number 13, any questions for Mr. Papa George about the Roger Sherman Elementary School Security Vestibule? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, number 13 carries, we waive the reading. Did I put this before us? Did I put, motion to put number 14 before us? We waive the reading. I don't remember, should I put them before, a motion to put these before us?
I didn't. No. And the motion to, yeah, to put before.
All right, we're gonna go back to 13. Can I have a motion to rescind the vote?
So moved.
Second? To rescind the prior vote?
Yeah, second.
Okay. All in favor of rescinding the vote?
Aye.
Okay, back to, um, number 13, can I have a motion to put?
So moved.
Second, okay. All right, um, any discussion? All right, can I have a motion to approve number 13, which was the Roger Elementary School Vestibule? We know we're voting now, we're voting now.
Yeah.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Okay, can I have a motion to put number 14, we waive the reading?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, can I have a motion to put number 15 before us?
Second.
Any discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, number six.
So I make a motion to combine 16, 17, and 18.
Okay, we're going to combine?
And 19? No.
Well, should we?
Yeah.
Oh, 19? We should waive the reading.
Or waive the reading, I mean, I mean combine, I'm sorry, I meant waive the reading.
Waive the reading.
Do you want to waive, do you want to waive all of them now, or do you want to do it by, by schools?
Why don't we just?
I think you should do all of them.
Do all of them? Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's sixteen. Sixteen through twenty-four. Yeah, sixteen through twenty-four.
I make the motion to waive the reading for 16 to 24.
Second.
All in favor of waiving the reading?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we are on number 16. Um, only discussion?
Motion on 16?
Oh, can I have a motion to, thank you, to here, number 16?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on number 16, which is the Vestibule for Borough Elementary School? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Another motion to put number 17?
Second.
Kupchak, any discussion? Seeing none, back to the public for a vote, any, back to the public for any public comments, seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, moving on to number 18, can I have a motion to put 18 before us?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, to the public, any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote?
Aye.
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 All in favor, motion carries three zero. Moving on to number 19, can I have a motion to put number 19 before us?
So moved. Second.
Second by Ms. Kupchak, any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Moving on to number 20, this is for Springfield Elementary School Vestibule, can I have a motion to put this before us?
So moved.
Ms. Kupchak?
Second.
Second by Ms. Spire, any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Moving on to number 21, can I have a motion to put number 21 before us?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kupchak, any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote? Aye, motion carries three zero. Moving on to number 22, this, we're on the Vestibule for the Early Childhood Center at Ward, can I have a motion to put this before us?
So moved.
Ms. Kupchak, second by Ms. Spire, any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All in favor? Motion carries three zero. Number 23, a motion to put it before us?
So moved.
Ms. Kupchak, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Number 24, can I have a motion to put number 24?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote? All approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Speed, speed voting there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 25, approval of the minutes, to here and approve the draft minutes of October 1st, 2025, and October 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Kupchak, second by Ms. Spire. Any discussion? Any public comment? Back to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Number 26, to here, updates from the First Selectmen. Dwight and Early Childhood Classrooms, just wanted to update the board and the public that this project is moving forward through the town boards, the board of finance heard a special, had a special meeting and heard a presentation from the consultant that the school feasibility studies, FAGALS, and then they voted to approve the project the next night, so this project is moving forward, there was pretty strong support from the board of finance, and it will be sitting with the RTM at this point, and hopefully we'll have a decision by the end of the month. The building committee was also approved by the RTM, so pending approval of this project, they'll be ready to go and, you know, start applying to the state for, for funding.
So I, I just want to say, you know, for the record, I watched the meeting.
Yeah.
And I was like, like completely blown away that, that that committee who was reviewing all this over the past year never talked to Park and Rec. I, I have to say, I was like really shocked, and that we're gonna lose all these fields and no one ever talked to Anthony, and I just feel that was a huge mistake, huge. And based on the conversation that night, you know, there was, like, it could potentially cost us up to eight million to replace these fields, so.
Well, the eight million was for the fields at Giant Steps, that figure, and I think that we're gonna have to wait and see, you know, this was an initial design for Dwight, what that building ends up ultimately, you know, space on the site, and I would hope that they look at ways of just preserving fields if possible.
No, I hear you, I just think that, you know, it was a full year for people waiting and to not talk to the Park and Rec director and bring him in to an in-house group, you know, was not smart, um, just to be blunt about it. And, you know, obviously, our, our, you know, recreation programs are extraordinarily popular and important for kids, you know, for their physical, um, activities, I mean, it's so important for kids. I just, you know, I really feel like that was a huge blunder, and I would like to hear more to the board about what we're gonna do about all this, because, um, taking fields offline, um, I mean, I don't know if we have to, you know, make a, uh, emergency appropriation of some kind to remove that building up at Giant Steps and see where we are, like, find out if we can put some fields up there, cause I'd hate to see kids missing out, um, not being able to participate teams and all of that. So, I mean, you, we all know, field space is tight in this town and fields are very expensive, I just think that it really, when you're looking at a 70, whatever, $6 million appropriation to find out later that we're gonna potentially be spending way more than that, it's not, it's not a good way to do business, it should have been, all been presented to us so that we can make an educated decision about the costs, because I felt like, when I watched the meeting, I was like, oh my God, like, I didn't even think to ask that, didn't even think.
Well, I think that right now, we're just looking at Dwight and the current conceptual plan is losing one field there potentially.
But we're losing one at Jennings, too.
But, I mean, that, I think, that's, I think that that's down the road, and I hear you, and I, I don't, I absolutely think that we need to, and you both know that space is limited.
Yeah.
And I think that the Giant Steps property is something that we should probably, and I, if you watch the meeting, you know, even a townwide facilities commission, which there's an ordinance for that we don't have, you know, what we should, we should maybe look at that, and, because that is, multiple people have come to me with ideas for that space.
No, people, yeah, I hear you.
And I think that that, we should really probably, and holistically, you know, you, you brought up Moniterris, too.
I like the idea about the town facilities, but, you know, when you put in a whole brand-new department and you hire all these people, we're supposed to be doing pretty much that.
Well, I mean, that.
And getting paid pretty good money.
But we didn't, but that was more of a reallocation of existing staff from other departments.
There was new people, too.
But, I don't want to, I want to stay.
I know, I know, I'm just saying that.
And I think that I'm, I think that.
I don't want to, I don't want to argue, I just want to say that, I think that in the future.
And I think that for feasibility, that I don't disagree that there could have been, there could have been other.
Shared that with us, cause I feel like I, we widely voted on something without all the details, and it's not up to you or I to figure out what's not happening, we should have been told those things. I'm just saying, they, they, everybody needs to know that.
That there is, that this impacted, the impact of building a new building there, we will be potentially losing field space there, that we need to take into consideration how we would address that, either by finding a new field, or just how we schedule our existing fields, which Mr. Cal would read.
So scheduled, I mean, they're.
Shared, shared already, and it's unfortunate that, I, I don't like to be put in the position of putting Parks and Rec against schools, cause both of them are, are, it's a needed service that we need to.
They're both important.
And schools that we are required by law to provide to our, to our students, so I think that absolutely need to continue the discussion, and Giant Steps building and what's gonna happen with that, I don't disagree with you, that we should look at seeing if we could get that down sooner.
Sooner.
Sooner rather than later for multiple reasons.
Right, and I just think that we're gonna need an assessment of the property, because obviously, there's a lot of wetland there, um, but it would be important to find out how much space we could use for fields, because we're obviously potentially losing more than one, maybe even more than two.
No, we should definitely, and that's part of the Parks and Rec master plan, that I think that we need to, I don't want to get too off topic, even just there and long-term for Moniterris and the Turner Army site, if it ever, if we ever get that building, looking long-term for.
We have the building.
Well, I mean, in ter, well, just in terms of being able to actually get in there, I mean, we're in slow progress, but again, this is one of those government.
That would be interesting, could you update us maybe at the next meeting?
I'll see if, mhm, I mean, I.
I'm just, I know, I know what a bear, I understand.
I think there's no update, but.
I know, it's, it's very frustrating.
But, um, I definitely, and in that, and that's, to my understanding, it needs to be used for rec, for recreation.
I think we were the last, when I left, we were supposed to do, they came back after, all the Ts were crossed and we were right there, it was so government, right, federal government, something about we had to do a public.
Hearing.
Yes, it was such a, right, I mean, did we do that? Do you know?
I don't, I don't think that we did that, we're currently just going in terms of.
Who's working on it?
The testing of the building, like, just clearing the condition of the building itself, and we needed to get clearance on that, and that's what we've been working on with the federal government, and right now, it's, with the federal government being close, you can imagine that things are even moving a little slower than.
But there was, it was just down to an oil tank leak in the underground or something like that, and we had gotten sign off with deep and all of that, that it was nothing spectacular, but then there was this, like you're saying, some Brock thing where you had to do a public, um, thing, I don't know what it was, it was, you know, a technicality situation, but that was two years ago, so, I mean, we should get.
We'll get the update next.
Yeah, just find out.
Definitely, definitely we'll get an update to the board and to the public, but I think that.
And Himes was helping us big time with it, he, so he's very from, his staff, if he has the same staff. It was pretty good helping us, so, I mean, that would be obviously a home run, cause we're gonna seem like need it now, more than ever.
Yeah, that this is, so, I think this is part of a, just next step in terms of some of our town properties that we, that we have, that can be used for multiple things. This one, Turner, is for recreation, so I think definitely.
It has to be, yeah.
Look, the towns facility committee that you mentioned, I, I looked way back in the RTM, like, four, six years ago, I said, why don't we have that, and I looked into having it reformed again, and, so I, I would encourage you to look into that a little bit more of forming that.
And I think maybe, I don't know if it.
You think we're so spread?
Needs to be looked at differently, about what the, what the function will be, but I think that that would definitely be a conversation I would want to have with the RTM post this November election, um, appreciating that things might change, the dynamic may or may not change significantly, and.
I know the ordinance is in place, and the committee technically.
Should be.
Technically, according to the way the ordinance is written, the committee that was there at the time that it kind of disbanded.
Is still, is still in, still in pack, so they really. So they really.
Those members that were there are technically on, I forget who acted, there was someone on there and I was like, hey, do you know you're still on this committee? But, yeah, they're technically.
We'll definitely look at that, because there is an ordinance, so we should have it. So looking to definitely.
Yeah.
And to your point about some public hearings and public discussion.
Yeah, there was some technicality about it, but.
Having it go to.
Maybe just, you know, have someone in your office send an email to Himes, just to say, where are we with this?
Well, I mean, and Christine Brown is, she has been in contact with them on a regular basis, and there has been movement, but it has been slow. And right now, not with the shutdown, we're not gonna get anywhere, and we kind of, we use our, our federal delegation for multiple things, Rooster River, trying to get Army Corps of Engineers to be signing off on things, and they have been helpful. Definitely can, can ask about this, maybe post-government shutdown, because right now, everything is.
Actually, the building is pretty solid. You know, when we had looked at it, we were gonna just gut it, you know, fix it inside, but it, the building was solid. And we, well, I was thinking about moving Park and Rec department there. And then obviously, the property that they're on is ours, and it's a high-value property. You get a very big rent for that property.
The current person.
Yeah, for the town.
Yeah.
But obviously, it's money. It has a great gym, you know, it has like, it has like nice things. It's just, you know, it just needs to be fixed up.
Well, and I think that that.
No space in back town.
Yeah, well, how much, when we're talking about fields, like how much?
You could, we were thinking about pickleball, obviously, everybody loves pickleball, and even another feat, I mean, we could probably do an entire field back there. Anthony would know better, but, yeah.
And I don't remember if it's in the Parks and Rec master plan, that building, given the status of it being questionable.
Might have been, but it's such.
I don't, I don't think it was. I don't recall that being in there at all.
I can't remember either.
I don't, I don't think so.
Such a, you know, such a great thing to have, I wish we could have it for real.
Well, and hopefully, you know, sooner rather than later, and as we talk about needing more field space and looking at that and how we could potentially use that building to meet the needs of the town. Pickleball, yes, but we've since, but we've gotten.
We've put in a lot of pickleball.
Put in a lot of pickleball, of course, but still seems to be pretty popular. Was wondering if it was gonna pay it out, but it has not. All right, well, conversation for another day, but hear you about.
Yep.
New Bigelow Center for Senior Activities Bus, just wanna let you know that it's, it's on the road. It came to visit today, brand new, has a new bus smell and everything, so I'm excited to get that in service for, for our seniors. Proposed town charter revision ballot questions. Just want to let you know that the town clerk wrote explanatory text for the questions. The RTM approved allowing her to do that. We work with the registrar voters to do a mailing to, to residents, just so they had the questions and had the explanatory text. It will be posted at all voting sites, but we wanted, as we've talked about, just getting people to appreciate that these, these questions are on the ballot, that they should flip over their ballot, and if they have any, any questions, they should, you know, I would say, start by looking at the CRC website, because there's so much information there, just recordings of past meetings, the questions that were asked by members of the public, some of the answers that were given, the town. We need to be just putting it out there for the public. We can't advocate for or against. We're very much providing information, but we are not allowed to give any commentary on, on whether or not people should support or not. Right now, it is, it has gone through the proper process, and it will be up to the voters. So encourage everybody to, to learn more before they head to the polls.
That's kind.
And keep an eye, keep an eye out in the mail, because there will be the explanatory texts coming, and I then, the registrars were working, and Ms. Carpenter and the First Selectman's office really led the charge on that.
And last time, I don't know who did it. It might have been the registers, maybe it was us, I don't even know, but they had a big, like, poster board.
Yep.
At each place, so people could actually read it when they got there, so that, I hope we're gonna do that again.
The, the registrars are going to do that again. The question, the proposed change is also, was published in the paper. I think there's copies that are available at the library. The library and senior center, but.
See what happens, I think, and I think Bridgeport's doing one now, I heard it on the radio. People complained, the question's not enough information. It's like, we're gonna have like a, you know, four paragraph question, you know, you're not gonna have that. But I know it's so hard to get these things passed in all towns, because people generally don't know what it is, and their initial reaction is to vote no, because they don't get it.
Well, be careful, don't wanna, you know, just remind them.
Well, we voted, just, we voted for it, so I'm supportive.
I know, I know, I know, all right.
Just remind them to flip the ballot, that's the most important thing.
Flip the ballot, flip the ballot, and Ms. Cupcake is right, we did a lot of, we did, we did, the Board of Selectmen.
Is the whole thing in the back?
Did.
Back with RTM, probably.
The questions, I think the questions.
Is on the back?
Is on the back. The questions, but the explanatory text.
Is a separate piece.
Is a separate piece.
Yeah, that won't.
It'll be posted, but watch, look, look in your mail, because the mail should be coming within the next week. This is not part of the updates, but I just wanted to give it to the board and to the public, that the Siding Council is voting tomorrow, scheduled to vote tomorrow on the Monopole project. We got that delay from, from September. It's on their agenda.
How are they doing that without the chair?
For tomorrow, that's PURA.
How many people?
They have, they have.
Oh, PURA or the Siding Council?
Siding Council for the Monopole.
Right, but didn't she resign or step down? The chair?
She was the chair of PURA.
Siding Council.
Siding Council for, it was for, PURA we were dealing with for Aquarian, Siding Council for UI.
She's siding, she was siding council. Melissa Gillette.
Well, they have.
Because I know there were down members, and then they added one.
They did, and they have, they have enough members, they have enough members to act. We have been trying.
I'm surprised you're not gonna wait for a new chair.
We, we have been, and we'll see, we'll see what happens tomorrow, but I just wanna put out there, ask residents just to tune in, if you have, again, write to the Siding Council, sharing our concerns about this project. We have been to exploring alternatives. Everybody knows the concerns as they, as they stand right now, with the impact on historical properties, churches, local businesses, both resident, residential property, the taking of private property, and local businesses, both here in Southport, Fairfield, and in Bridgeport. Hoping, you know, Governor did intervene and asked for a delay before the last meeting. I don't know what's gonna happen. We, we have reached out to the Siding Council directly, asking them to delay again, to give all parties more of an opportunity to continue to negotiate.
Now, you said at our last update that you, that you felt like there was a lot of burden put on us for engineering, like to send back information.
I think that just for, for the short, for the month that we received, I think that it was a shortened timeline to really come up with viable alternatives from that level of expertise for running a transmission line, that, that our, our in-house expertise, they, that is just not, that is just not their field, so we would have to work with outside consultants, and we would ideally be looking to UI to provide us with information, because they are the experts in this field. So that's really where we are right now.
Were they, Christine, were they willing to meet, just meet with you guys?
We have, we have met, the, the negotiations really didn't lead to an alternative pathway at this point in time. I'm hopeful that, you know, we still have 24 hours before tomorrow's meeting, and things could definitely change, which is why we asked residents just to, again, share their concerns about this project, and, and we will see what tomorrow brings. I certainly hope the Siding Council will either reject the project or, again, give us more time to work with all parties to come up with an alternative that is, that addresses the many concerns that are shared by, by both Fairfield and with Bridgeport. And we, we have remained united in this fight and really thank residents for their advocacy and elected officials that have spoken out on our behalf, and of course, we've got numerous grassroots organizations, both in Fairfield, Southport, and in Bridgeport, that have also just been sharing their individual concerns. But.
They may postpone it because the chair, you know, so being the chair, who else?
They, they may postpone. I, I hope that they, time would definitely be, be helpful, given the magnitude of this project, that, and my understanding is that there's not an immediate need, so hopefully, all parties will, will look at that, and, and the Siding Council, we've, we've talked about it before, you know, back in June, they did a straw poll vote, and the vote went our way, and then a few months later, it did not go our way, and there was no new information presented to the Siding Council that would explain why they would switch their votes. And we still have questions about, to them, of what changed. We don't see, we don't really see a change for that reversal. It, it's more than concerning. But we're in a public meeting and have to keep the civil discourse, so I will just keep my thoughts on that, to that. All right, so announcements, October is National Pedestrian Safety Month, among other things, but October's a big month, but we just want to, to raise awareness on that. A lot of concerns around safety, both for those that are, we have more and more people walking, so the town continues to look at sidewalks and traffic calming measures, and just want to ask all residents just to, to be cognizant of the fact that they're sharing the road.
Bill Hurley did a nice video.
Yes.
I saw you. Yeah, it was pretty good.
Okay, and we now are moving on. Any announcements from either one of you? Of the Harvest, Harvest Festival. This is Saturday. I'm trying to think of town events that we should be promoting. Dog parade, right?
And I heard the chief said that the.
Yes, the Chamber of Commerce's Harvest Festival Market is this Saturday on the town green, and there is going to be a dog parade. So, I mean, I don't know how you can not go to that.
It's very cute.
Because it is very cute. And the chief said Penny will be there. So for anyone who wants to see any resident who has been following.
Penny's like literally like a celebrity.
I mean, Penny is a celebrity, if you want.
She is. I mean, you see her, I mean, all their little videos, people are like just loving on her.
I think you should go see Penny in person, because she's growing very quickly, and she's not gonna be cute little Penny, she's gonna be a, yeah, she'll still be cute.
I was gonna say, they're always puppies.
All right, moving on to Town Attorney. Motion to go into executive session with Attorney Courtney Stabnek and Town Attorney Philip Pierce concerning pending litigation, Lanice versus Town of Fairfield, possible action to approve agreement after executive session. Can I motion?
Some love.
Ms. Cupcake, seconded by Ms. Fowler, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are in executive session. Opened, Paris, please go. Motion carries three zero.
All right, can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement on terms discussed in executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
This floor is second.
Second.
All there?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.